Territories of the Anishniwami, the Cree and Yalgonkin peoples and other indigenous peoples whose presence continues to enrich our environment community today. We recognize and offer our gratitude to their care and teaching about the earth and culture. We honor those teachings through our interactions today and every day thereafter. We thank them for sharing this land with us. We commit to ongoing learnings about how cultural identity is celebrated, represented and honored, as well as inclusion in indigenous perspectives through action, which. Called order in a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
Moved by Councilor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Patrick Adams, being resolved with the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on October 4th, 2022 to be approved as circulated.
On favor? Chair?
Counselor Adams, can you hear us? Okay, very good, perfect.
Uh, declaration of your interest? None noted. Petitions and delegations. 4.1 rescue commendation.
In your worship through UTE council, during routine noon lap swim on September 14th, aquatic supervisor Amy Clark was guarding the pool from the deep end guard chair. During a regular scan of the pool, she noticed one of the more competent swimmers on the bottom in the deep end. Within seconds of realizing something was amiss, she blew her whistle and yelled to the other patrons to clear the pool. As she skillfully jumped down from the guard chair, she radioed the front desk attendant that she needed help, as per our standard operating procedure for when a guard guards alone. Amy jumped into the pool and brought the female adult to the surface while ensuring her airway remained closed. Patrons were keen to provide assistance and Amy calmly directed what she needed and from whom. Victim was removed from the water and Amy conducted a primary assessment. When Amy realized a female was not breathing effectively, she began assisted rescue breaths. The desk staff had called for EMS during this time and patrons retrieved the AD machine and blankets. Within minutes EMS was on site and transported the victim to the hospital. For the swift recognition and action of Amy Clark, which resulted in a successful rescue, we are honored to present the rescue commendation.
So on behalf, sorry, just, okay. So on behalf of Mayor Kylie, council, the staff of the town of Kirkland Lake and the residents of the town of Kirkland Lake, I want to thank you for going above and beyond what your job description asked for, for being at the right place at the right time and making a difference in this person's life. Thank you.
Yeah, difference. Oh, you want the, oh, okay, nevermind, nevermind.
Move it closer. Item 5 acceptance of missing recommendations.
Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Patrick Adams, being resolved with council super minutes of the following minutes of the regular meeting of council held September 20th, 2022.
On favor? Chair? Item 6 reports to municipal officers, want to review the town of Kirkland Lake's travel expense policy and Sean the Card Director, Corporate Services.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to council. That's a tough one to follow up. As you're aware, both the cost of gas and overall cost of goods have increased significantly over the past few years. Staff thought it was a good time to review the travel policy, given the gas prices had almost doubled over the past year, although they have started to to come down somewhat. The two main changes to our policy firstly, the mileage rate has been at forty three cents for several years. Staff is now recommending to follow the reasonable per per kilometer allowance established by the government of Canada, which is currently sixty one cents for the first five thousand kilometers. Staff would make the necessary changes on January 1st of each year. This will allow the town to maintain a fair rate without bringing the policy to council each year. The second change is an increase to the meal prices from ten dollars for breakfast, fifteen dollars for lunch, twenty five for dinner to to the the increased price of fifteen dollars for breakfast, twenty five for lunch and thirty five for dinner. Uh, if any of the employees choose to eat at the hotel after they they're leaving in the morning, uh, or stop at a restaurant on the way back, really the old prices do not cover a meal at this point in time. Staff also made several clarification changes in in the policy, one of them being that alcohol is not covered in the expense policy. Um, I think it's always been in place, uh, just hasn't been in the policy. Uh, we did have four or five sample policies from different municipalities. One of the, one of the policies had the the miles rate at fifty eight point five, which is the Ontario rate. The other ones had their own rate set up, set up in the policies. Um, I did go through the minutes for the district commissary social service board and they increased theirs to sixty five cents in the in as of July 1st. So we did do a bit of investigation into it and basically we're recommending that we go with the CRA rate. So I would available for any questions if anyone has any.
Counselor Owen?
Yes, um, I'm glad to see it's going to be reviewed annually because otherwise we're we're hit with a big whopping increase every time. My question is, if the price of gas goes down in that yearly review, does the per kilometer rate go down? Or is just just an upward scale? Because I anticipate that in the future, price of gas may well go down and go down significantly.
Through you, worship, and to that counsel role. We we basically, we spoke at our senior management meeting and said we would bring it back to council if if it doesn't, if it doesn't change. The CRA rate, we're guessing, would change as well. Um, but we are willing to bring it back if if things do change quite a bit, so. It's hard to say. It's just, we just wanted to get away from, um, you know, it's been two years. It probably should have come back last year because gas prices started increasing significantly at that point, so we just wanted to make sure there's at least something in there allowing it to increase and then if if we do see a a significant decrease, we'll bring it back to council.
Um, so on the increase side, it's automatic? Well, then I want it automatic on the decrease side, in fairness to the taxpayers, definitely. I don't think it should have to come back to council. It doesn't have to come back for an increase. Shouldn't have to come back for a decrease.
And through your worship, I I would, I would say that the CRA rate goes back down, we will. So it's going to be whatever that rate is at that point. Um, but if it doesn't move down and we do see the rates coming down, then we will bring it back to council.
Okay. Counselor?
Yeah, no, I have a different question. Oh. Still on this?
It's on this, yes.
Okay, just before, I I think it's a fair assessment to go based on off the CRA, we same thing at THU a few months back. So it's a fair, uh, organization to use as a comparison.
Yeah, um. Why are we not using the Ontario rate? Because that's based on Ontario prices.
Through your worship, I I've just basically, we decided to go in between because we were, after we looked at the the DSAT's rate of sixty five cents, we just kind of went between. If you guys would rather go with Ontario and then council, we could make that change to the policy.
My problem with the CRA is it takes into account British Columbia, where it's significantly higher than Ontario. It takes into account some of the eastern provinces where gas prices are significantly higher. And my concern is for the taxpayers, it's not based on what another organization decides. And if the provincial government is paying fifty eight point five percent, uh, that's based on Ontario gas prices. Uh, I think that's what we should be going with.
Do you have any information with the gas price? Like I drove out east this summer and the prices are not that different from Ontario to PEI.
Well, right now in BC.
Oh.
Okay.
I said PEI, I didn't say the economy, but.
But there are, I I don't know today's prices. But I know when I've been watching on TV, East Coast is often being much higher. Uh, BC is always higher and that's part of the CRA pricing. And we're in Ontario and our taxpayers are in Ontario. And I think the fair thing is to to use the provincial government's rate. I mean, if it's good for the provincial government, why is it not good enough for our employees? To modify.
The council will see the the recommendation modified. They have to ask for an amendment. They have to have a second.
Okay.
But they need to tell me what they would like. Uh, the recommendation had changed.
I would like to see the recommendation, but sorry.
Okay, so we need, we don't want to agree with the amendment or?
You you put the amendment for with a second year and then you have a discussion about the amendment and then go back to the majority.
Okay. So do you have a second year for the?
Well, I.
Or do you want to present your?
I want, I I would like to present amendment to motion if we use the Ontario, we have fifty eight point five cents.
Okay, I'm not going to second, I'm just. I can understand the rationale being used right now. Um, oftentimes we do reach out when we're comparing our municipality, we do reach out to several other. I can see that staff do that in this situation as well, which is something that we want. I don't believe this is a huge cost to the taxpayers. Um, overall, I could be wrong. Um, however, I would like to see it go as presented personally. Um, but that is just my two cents on that.
Yes, Counselor Shabbat?
Are you looking for a second year?
Yes, I am.
I will second that. And the question that I have is, do we have, uh, staff, people going out of province for conferences and whatnot? Uh, all most of their conferences are all limited to the province, yes.
Through your worship, Counselor Shabbat. Yeah. Um, as far as I know, since I've been here, we haven't seen any go to province. I hope they're they're all within Ontario.
Great, so the discussion is to be about the amendment now and all of it.
Uh, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Through your worship, Sean is correct. Right now, we do not have anyone going outside of province who have in the future that if the if the opportunity came about for staff to travel, for example, myself to a conference or training session, you know, then that would be considered. So no one has yet, but, uh, that may be something in the future, but we won't take off the table.
So we'll come back to motion at hand.
Okay, so I have, uh, moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor La Chava, that an amendment to the recommendation be made as follows, to have the proposed policy amended to reflect the reimbursement rate with the Ontario reimbursement rate of fifty eight point five cents a kilometer. So just a discussion on the amendment.
Counselor White?
Um, to further the point about the amendment, in our strategic plan and our strategic directives, we wanted to be more comparable and and more competitive in the employment market to attract better staff. So I believe that offering something a little bit higher will also do that task as well.
Counselor Shabbat?
Well, I take it you that most of the, uh, uh, travelers by our staff within the province as such, I think the, uh, the rates for the province should should apply. If it's good for any of the provincial, uh, uh, staff, it should be good for our staff. So I have a feeling.
Counselor Owen?
Yes. Um. I see what Counselor White is saying. I don't agree with her, but that's fine. Um, I'm not going to live and die over a few cents per kilometer. I put it forward in good faith and I put it forward because I feel if that's what provincial uh, people with much higher education and and much more experience are getting paid to travel to conferences and conventions, I I I don't see why, when we're traveling with Ontario, in within Ontario, that you would, uh, travel further. So you know, like you say, I'm not going to live and die over a few cents kilometer and and I respectfully disagree with Counselor White, but that's fine.
Not entirely convinced the education level has a need of it. I think it's more.
Well, I'm just saying, man, what.
You don't have to have more education to work at the province than you do.
Uh, well, on anyways.
Yeah.
I'll I'll retract that. I'm sorry, actually, acting mayor. I will retract that statement. I did not mean it the way that it came out. I I meant, thank you, I meant something totally different. I apologize for that.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, I would agree with Counselor White. After, uh, the member of council's son began working for the mine, all we heard about is how we can't keep up with the mine and how how we're supposed to do that. This is a very attractive offer to help retain our employees in our community and it's not really worth, I don't know, playing over three cents as a political taxpayer defender thing. I came to this meeting to just do some housekeeping and raise my hand, so I even wanted to agree with Counselor White.
I, no, I'm comfortable.
So.
All, yeah.
Would you like me to reread the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor La Chava, that the recommendation be amended as follows, to have the proposed policy amended to reflect the reimbursement rate for the Ontario reimbursement rate of fifty eight point five cents per kilometer.
On favor? Opposed?
It's lost. Now, would you like me to read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
Moved by Counselor La Chava, seconded by Counselor Stacy White, being resolved at report number twenty twenty two four zero zero six, entitled review of the town of Kirkland Lake's travel expense policy to be received, that council rescind Corp. twenty twenty four travel expense policy and that council approve Corp. twenty twenty two oh oh seven travel expense policy and finally that Corp. twenty twenty two oh oh seven travel expense policy be inserted into the corporate policy.
On favor? Opposed?
It's carried.
Item six point two code approval for fitness park part of Fed North funding project, answer sealed.
Through your worship, members of council, utilizing the delegated authority under bylaw twenty two dash one nineteen, the chief minister officer has signed an agreement ABC Recreation to supply and install a fitness park for one eighteen thousand eight hundred fifty nine dollars and nine cents plus HST. This is one of six projects approved by Fed North for the civic park upgrade. And just note that civic park, the civic park Fed North funding green was approved on by council on, uh, January 11th, 2021. Uh, please note, however, there was no mission in the report. Under financial considerations, it should read, there are no additional financial considerations as a civic park upgrade is an approved twenty twenty two capital project. So there was no mission there by mistake, so. Um, welcome any questions on council.
No questions?
Moved by Counsel, by Counselor Patrick Adams, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen, be resolved at report number twenty twenty two CA zero zero seven, entitled quote approval for fitness park part of Fed North funded project be received for information.
On favor? Chair? Um. Yep, uh, two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three, supply and delivery of winter sand mix and stockpile request for tender and full pay manager of operations and engineer.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. I'm here today to present a report to council for the supply and delivery of winter sand for the upcoming winter season. On average, our department uses about forty five hundred tons per year and we had a leftover last year of about nine hundred tons. Don Ed Sheik Trucking Limited from Cobalt, Ontario is our little bit of this year, thirty seven thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars to supply the town with thirty six hundred tons of fresh winter sand and to mix the new sand plus a leftover sand from last year with four to five percent bulk de-icing salt. The use of sand and salt mixture has been widely used across Ontario for decades and continues to be the best economical solution for smaller towns and their winter needs. The ultimate goal is to provide our town with outstanding service. Therefore, our recommendation is for council to authorize the execution of contract with Don Ed Sheik Trucking Limited, so we may continue to provide our citizens with safe roads and sidewalks for the upcoming future. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do have, uh, got a question as a comment. It's funny strange that we don't have any contractors or businesses to.
Just about over three.
Yes.
Uh, while I did go through a request, an RFP, so everybody had an equal chances to submit prices, uh, over the years, it's been, there's only ever two companies that usually bid for these contracts.
Yeah, yeah, for a matter of time.
And they're both from one time, correct, including this one.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, historically, there was a a local company that did bid on these contracts, but it no longer exists and, um, if you were to give preference to a local company, they weren't the lowest bidder and, um, that was your only justification was that they were local, you would be, uh, flying in the face of, believe it or not, a NAFTA, well, whatever NAFTA is called now, so, um, the works department's hands are tied, even if there was a local bid to take the lowest bid. And that information is based on inquiries I had received from, uh, local contractors in the past about using their 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 trucks. And, uh, at the time, the acting CAO did check into and I will see information he brought that to me.
This is not our first time in this council lab to go without a town supplier or stuff, so it is, it's marketed, it is what it is. Any other questions?
Okay, moved by Counselor La Chava, seconded by Counselor Stacy White, being resolved at report number twenty twenty two PW oh seventeen, entitled twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, supply and delivery of winter sand mix and stockpile request for tender fifty nine, five, sorry, five eighty nine twenty two be received and the council hereby awards a contract to Don Ed, how do you say that?
A sheet.
A sheet, Trucking Limited for our P five eighty nine twenty two for the town's twenty twenty two supply and delivery of winter sand mix and stockpile for the tender to about thirty seven thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars plus HST. And finally, then an execution by law, be, um, authorizing the mayor and his partner to execute the contract between the town of Kirkland Lake and Don Ed Sheik Trucking Limited be brought forth for three readings on it. That's supposed to say October 4th, twenty twenty.
On there? Opposed? Chair? Item six point four, update on the Museum of Northern History and its funding secretary director, Community Services.
Thank you, worship, through UTE council. Staff wanted to present council with, um, an update on where we are in working with some of the recommendations regarding Museum of Northern History that that council has given to us in the past prior to the end of council term. So this is kind of close. Um, so we have been working with the Ontario Heritage Trust. They were, um, advised that the town of Kirkland Lake was looking at a various, various lease auction. Um, we, as you remember from past council meetings, we are in a sixty year lease with the trust and this lease does ensure that the town takes care of operating and capital expenses. And council has decided in the past that because we don't own the building, it is hard to swallow the fact that we have to to maintain all of the capital expenses. So we have been talking to the trust. They are aware of what, um, staff and council feel and what we would like to do and what they have let us know is that they have to do a building condition assessment prior to determining what their next steps are. As we have had trouble getting contractors, they are also having trouble getting contractors. So they have to have a contractor that, um, adheres to the heritage trust standards for architecture. So they put out an RFP, it closed, they had five, um, interested parties that that took the information. They all said that they didn't have the capacity to do it based on the timelines given to them. The the trust then extended the deadline with the hopes that someone would be able to do it and they still had no one able to do it. So what their procurement role state is they can go to their board to get permission to talk to, um, one of the companies that is the consultant firms that is recognized by them, but without having to bid on it. So there was a group that was going through to Sydney this month and they said that they felt that they would be able to stop at the museum in Kirkland Lake and do the building condition assessment. So we have not had any correspondence from the trust since that time. That was in August in the summer. They actually physically came to cite uh, members of the trust, not the architectural firm that's going to do the building condition assessment or the consultants. So our hopes are that they are going to complete that in October before we have snow again and that they will provide, um, the building condition assessment to their board and then their board can make a decision as to what they would like to do with the staff's long-term lease. So that's, that's a lot to say that we haven't had a lot of progress. This has been well over a year. We started back in June of twenty twenty one talking to the trust, asking them to, uh, to consider a renegotiation. In the meantime, staff have been very busy. Um, they've taken the information that council has provided direction in terms of the service delivery review from WSCS and they made some strides in some areas. There's still lots of work to be done, but I have included the staff report that was given to the museum advisory committee in August showing a different work that has been done. So some of the areas they're working hard on is is doing more activities and programming to attempt to increase revenues. Um, expenditures are are still certainly existed. So staff are very cognizant that, um, council knows that, yes, there's long-term capital costs, but there's also operating costs. And we feel that there may be, maybe with some more direction, there's a better way to do things. So we're not proposing anything right at this time, but what we would like to do, we have been speaking to WSCS, which is a consulting firm who has done the service delivery view in the past. And they had, if if you remember from their service delivery review, they had a lot of different ideas in there of ways to reboot and reimagine um, the museum and we think that can be very exciting. We don't have the expertise they do. They have people who are experts with museum on their staff. So what staff are at this point proposing is that when the new council comes um, together and probably in the first quarter of twenty twenty three, that we will bring back to you some potential terms of reference to have WSCS help us come up with a new business plan for the museum. And then at that point, council will determine if that was the route they want to go or if they have a different direction they'd like to see staff go. So basically just for information to be in our.
Any questions or comments? Counselor White?
Um, as the member of council, uh, the sitting member, um, appointed to that committee and as a person of a resident who had sat on that committee for for years prior, the work that is being done in accordance with the consultants is considering honestly and truly. They have done a lot of work that hadn't been done in the past. That being said, there's going to be difficult decisions coming for the next council. It is a historic building. It is part of our history, but it is more than that as well. It is the collection. It is donations from residents, past and present. Our history is in those walls, not to say that it has to stay in those walls. Our history is in those walls, not to say that it has to stay in those walls. I really do have to thank staff for all the work that they've done since getting the news in a year ago. They've really tried their best to come up with new plans and a new direction and I really do look forward to the work that they will do in the next term.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, um, I know one of the things that I had mentioned. Uh, during my term of council was I didn't think the museum was doing a very good job at raising its profile within the community, I have definitely noticed in the last. Six months to a year that the museum has, is working very hard to publicize and promote their events. Um, it reminds me of years and years ago when I was a reporter and was to cover the museum. Um, and, and, and I think they are to be applauded for, for doing that, that's a step in the right direction, it's a step in getting more people through the door. It's a step in, in selling more memberships and it's a step in getting community support, which will play a factor in what happens. With the museum, so I, I commend them for that, I think we're all on the same page, the museum is an important part of our heritage, it's something that we have to keep. We just have to figure out how we can best do that and I want to make that clear because. I've had people come up to me and say, oh, you're going to close the museum, we're not going, no, no, I, I can't speak to the future council, but I know that was never the intent of this council to close the museum. We were just looking at ways that we can reduce the costs to the taxpayer and at the same time. Present a very vital part of our community, I believe, so if you would pass on the museum, uh, their efforts are noted and appreciated, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for the report.
Moved by Councilor LaChava, seconded by Councilor Patrick Adams, be resolved in report number twenty-twenty-two CS fourteen entitled update on the Museum of Northern History be received.
On paper. Here. Item six point five amendment to the user fee by law additional lifeguard rate modification.
We do have one line item in our user fees that is a direct charge back to a user group or a family or a school, whoever it may be who's renting the pool. And that is if you need an extra lifeguard on the debt because of your numbers or because of the activity or the risk or whatever it may be. And it has typically been the actual hourly rate plus the mandatory CCP UI or EI um. And patient, so when we had the change with the results from the PAF, the lifeguards rate did go up. So rather than tie it to an actual rate, what we're recommending right now is just to change it to actual cost of staffing. So because this is just a one-line item change that's charged back to the taxpayer, we can do it um without the public consultation and consultation with the clerk. But we are very cognizant, staff as a whole, that there are a number of things in user fees we need to look at thoroughly with the increases in prices, so for example. In my area, if we do birthday parties in the pool, even the cost of pizza cakes have gone up, so we haven't gone to that level yet, that will be. In the new year, if there's significant change that has to get brought back with the public consultation, but at this point, we would like to make the one change for the additional lifeguard.
Counselor Owen.
Um, does this additional cost also apply to Black Kirkland Aquatic Club?
Yes, to all user groups.
Um, I was talking to a representative of Kirkland Aquatic Club uh last week at the complex. And that club is in very dire financial situations, uh, normally their coach is paid. This year he's working free because they cannot afford to pay the coach. Um, I think it would put an unfair burden on a local organization that deals with local kids. Providing a very important service. And I also believe that they. The number of local kids that have gotten scholarships to get their education by participating in CLAC. Is significant. And I know the organization is trying very hard to overcome their financial challenges. But I also know from, from, from being involved in, in sports. That it's very difficult to absorb a price increase in the middle of your budget. You did not budget for an increase in this cost, uh, as per past years, you anticipated that the cost would be. What you were told and I think that puts it on their strain, especially on an organization. That is, uh, is struggling, so I'm not in favor of this increase applying to the Kirkland Lake Aquatic Club. Um, I am in favor of it applying to private mentals and birthday parties and that kind of thing, yes, that makes sense. But to, to hit on a, a youth organization. That is already struggling in the middle of their budget, I don't think is the right.
Sacre, so because we offer a, sometimes we offer discounted rates to user groups that rent on a. Like on, on an annual basis, is this something that would be easily achievable? Like if we went down that direction, so for CLAC, that we would leave it at the old rate, but different groups, it'd have to be a whole price?
Anything's possible, so we can change line items in the user fees based on which group you would wish to have them paying. But we, we don't offer a discount for user groups right now, just like, so whatever the user, whether it's minor hockey, aquatic club, skating club. Whatever the rate published is, they pay whether they're renting one hour or a hundred and one hours, so the only time you get a discount, so they already get a discount in the early morning, so they get a twenty-five percent discount when they do early morning practices. And they get a twenty-five percent discount from the adult rate because of youth, so there are discounts that are applied to any youth group, so that would be a school that, so. So you know, the, the, the groups that we would be talking about would be schools, daycares, aquatic club, private rentals, those would be the four that on occasion require an extra guard.
So would the cost be able to just, would be able to be covered by a grant funded program?
By what, sorry?
The, our grant funding program.
Absolutely.
So the difference in price to, so that we don't hurt them too bad that we can compensate for our extra costs, but without penalizing them. Counselor.
So that was my suggestion as well, um, could we possibly work with or, or make that user group aware of our community grants program? That would offset it at least until the end of the year, um, so that they won't take a hit on their budget, absolutely, yeah.
But because this is the last meeting.
Exactly.
Of this council. Can you even fast track? Because that comes back to council, would you agree?
Or you're asking a question?
Yeah, so for this, if we wanted that grant program to apply for CLAC, like they have to submit an application and it has to come to council, we have to approve it. We're not meeting again until this council is understood.
This is council is not meeting until December.
Yeah, and this.
December sixth, yeah.
Yeah, so if we change this fee now, that means there's a month and a half of rental, so is that, is there mechanism somewhere we could fast track this or?
No.
Okay.
Unfortunately, um, the, I don't know how long the application process takes, but I can tell you that the, um, the committee that would be overseeing the grant. The community grant program is actually not sitting right now because they are, they are appointed as of November fifteenth, so. Um, yeah, I know that it, it, it would not be able to come, come forward in advance.
Okay, do you have a plan B option?
That's.
Is that, is there a plan B option that can help?
If, if the intent is to be able to fund it through the community grants program, if you pass it as is, what we could do is we can keep track of the difference. And then they would apply for the community grants and bring it to the December council meeting and then we could just take it off so December bill. So it's an option so that they wouldn't end up paying any more in the end of the year, that's their own option.
Counselor Owen.
The fact that they're not paying the coach says to me they don't have capital to pay anymore upfront. That is a paid position, it always has been, it's like a figure scale, it's a professional position. If they don't have the money to pay their coach, they don't have the money to pay upfront extra right now. And the last thing I want to do is see a youth program, a successful youth program fall because we priced them out of the business.
So we're definitely.
A rock.
Rock and hard, yeah.
And, and. And so.
That's coming on.
And just for the record, this conversation I had with the person was just a coincidence that it happened just prior to this meeting, it wasn't. It, it was only because I'm back at the complex while watching my grandchildren play hockey that I ran into this person, I didn't. Pre-planned this or anything, but I'm glad I did have the conversation because I wasn't aware that they were still.
There it. If it's the will of council, the change can be deferred to the new council to allow for. Uh, the change to be considered at the same time that the potential grant application be brought forward.
I know, just one. Um, Ms. Sacre, how much, how much money are we talking here, like I've been talking all groups here, like uh. Uh, third gen has just suggested we could defer it to the new council, I'm just, I have no idea what, what kind of financial, what that impact is on the department, which I think we need to know to make the decision as well.
You're going to be a real ballpark because I haven't calculated before I came, um. Or go his month?
I'm sure.
Four, four hundred dollars a month?
Four hundred dollars a month. And if we just give an exemption to CLAC, it would be much less than that?
They're probably the main user, so they're the ones that have the most hours, so.
And that would be expected, um. Uh, because swimming, swimming is something I'm very familiar with, uh, one of my nieces was at the Olympic Triads last, past session, so I'm very aware of how much CLAC is time. How much pool time, what the class start and they need that for their progress.
Counselor White, have to read.
Um, honestly, I would like to see it deferred altogether, um, it is a very low cost in the scheme of things, um. For a month, a month and a half, um, rather than try to, um. Pick and choose who we give uh deferrals to, I, I would just rather see it deferred across the board at this time.
I was just going to say something very similar, I think it would be very hard for us to say that one group, especially when it's nonprofits, if you're saying. You get the discount and the daycare doesn't or the school board doesn't, that's, that's a tough one.
Yeah.
So I'd rather see it, I'd rather see it.
Yeah, well, my point, but quite a, was want to make it to what you made that, let's defer this because uh if we don't do that, if you give uh one group uh. Uh, discount, reference your treatment, that would be a level good to all the other groups soon that may come in and say, well, listen, what about us? So either we defer this uh to the new council or we'll proceed to uh discount uh for everyone.
I'm going to move over to the second.
Move on. Counselor, one second, like, Counselor White.
I'm going to read. Moved by Councilor Owen, seconded by Councilor White, that report and recommendation entitled amendment to user fees by law additional lifeguard rate modification. We deferred to the new council. Do, do we want to sentence time or just leaving it open-ended and? Open-ended, yeah, sure, let me get to that, bring it back. To the new council.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because.
Uh, Counselor Owen.
Your user fees don't, they come back to council in January, right?
I believe the last time they were written, there wasn't an end time on it so that we weren't, because we brought them in late last time, I don't recall.
But normally, normally.
October, yeah, so we just brought them in October, oh, October last, or this year, we brought them in. It was in July, July through September because we had to do the public meeting.
Right.
But the previous, uh, the previous instance was in October, okay.
Because of this hockey and.
Yeah.
Season now, okay.
Do we need to read the motion again or just?
Yeah, first I'm confused.
Okay, moved by Councilor Owen, seconded by Counselor White, that, um, the report and recommended, uh, the report. Titled amendment to user fees by law additional lifeguard rate modifications and corresponding uh recommendation we defer to the new council.
On paper. Here. Item seven considerations of notices, motion seven point one, Counselor White's strong mayor is building.
Do you want to read it first? I will read it first, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Um, moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Patrick Adams. Whereas the government of Ontario through the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing has introduced Bill Three, which is described as an act to amend various statutes with respect to special powers and duties of heads of council. And whereas this bill now, having received royal sent, currently only applies to the city of Toronto and city of Ottawa, however, will later be expanded to include other municipalities. According to a statement made by the Premier of Ontario at the twenty-twenty-two annual conference. And whereas the bill, when expanded to other municipalities, will give mayors additional authority and powers and correspondingly take away authority and power from councils and professional staff. And will include giving the mayor the authority to propose and adopt the municipal budget and to veto some decisions of council. And whereas this bill, when expanded to other municipalities, will give authority over professional staff to the mayor, including that of the chief administrative officer. And whereas these changes, when expanded to other municipalities, will result in a reduction of independence for professional staff, including the CAO. Who currently provides, who currently provide objective information to the council and public and will now take direction for the mayor alone when the mayor so directs. And whereas these are surprising and unnecessary changes to the historical balance of power between the mayor and council. And which historically gave the final say in all matters to the will of the majority of the elected council. Therefore, being resolved with the council of the town of Kirkland Lake petition, the government of Ontario as follows. One, that the changes to the municipal Act two thousand and one are unnecessary and will negatively affect the town of Kirkland Lake. Two, and that if the Ontario government deems these changes necessary in large single-tier municipalities such as Toronto and Ottawa, that such changes should not be implemented in smaller municipalities. Three, and that the Ontario government should enact legislation clarifying the role of mayor, council and CAO, similar to those recommended by the Ontario Municipal Administrators Association, which is OMA. And those recommended by Judge Rocco in the Collinwood Judicial Inquiry of twenty twenty-four, and that. If the stated goal of this legislation is to construct more housing in Ontario, that this can be accomplished through other means, including amendment of the planning act and. Funding of more affordable housing and finally that a copy of this resolution be provided to the Premier of Ontario, the Minister of the Ontario Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, MMH. The MPP for Municipal Cochrane, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AWO, and all municipalities in the District of Tennessee.
Counselor White.
This is something communities shouldn't want, council shouldn't want, and mayors should not want. The best thing about uh local governance is we operate in a fishbowl. That every decision made by council is made at this table. So that all staff, all community members, and especially all the people that were elected to serve are aware of the decisions being made. We know all too well disastrous effects when one member of council tries to act on behalf of all members of council. You read it in the paper, you see it on social media, it can be disastrous when one member of council acts on their own behalf. It would take away everything that makes local governance, if you allow powers to one person and one person only. What do we have a council for, I just, I really um believe that this should not move ahead. And I believe that the premier should listen to the municipalities and rethink giving all these powers to one council member.
Counselor Owen.
I, I agree completely with the way I could think the Counselor White has said. I see this as a slippery slope. It started in Toronto and then it's going to go to Kingston, uh, I, I, and I don't know the exact cities, but it's going to go to uh cities the size of Kingston, uh. London, Windsor, and then, and well, of course, Brampton's going to be in there too because it's, you know, huge. And then it's going to go to uh. communities that are a little smaller and then a little smaller, and it's going to get to us. And quite frankly, I know people often disagree with me and that and that's fine. But I get to speak my mind at council equally with every other participant here, as long as I do it in the correct manner. I get to bring forward um, concerns that my constituents have brought to me in ver- in various ways to the council table or to the C A O to be addressed. Why would I be on council if those powers were driven away? What would be the incentive? It's not the money. It's not the benefits. Yes, there's still a commitment to the community. But if one person has bulk of power, sitting on council really um wouldn't amount to much. And as Counsel White has said, we have seen the drastic results of uh, what happens when all councils not vote on decisions. And um, it it can be a very scary concept. So any diminishing of individual counselors' uh ability to speak up for their residents, uh, I strongly endorse. Thank you.
I totally agree, Counsel White, on this one. This is dangerous territory. We're all, the mayor's the head of council, and that's where it should stay. More power is, could be dangerous. I fully support this motion. Yeah, all in favor? Carrie. And seven point two, K L Solar, Counsel Chauvin.
Moved by Counsel La Chava, seconded by Counsel Rick Owens. Whereas council for the town of Kirkland Lake deemed it necessary to receive a formal update on the town of Kirkland Lake Solar Inc. project. Therefore, being resolved, the council for the town of Kirkland Lake requested an information report, including a copy of the fully executed partnership agreement, a copy of the town of Kirkland Lake Solar Inc., articles of incorporation and bylaws, meeting dates and copies of corresponding meeting minutes of the town of Kirkland Lake Solar Inc. board, previously presented cash flow projections, new cash flow projections, and any other pertinent information. And finally, that this information report be presented to the new council at the regular meeting scheduled for December twentieth, twenty twenty two.
Yeah, I I thank you very much, Chairman Clark. This is, to me, is the first step towards uh the next council to have a serious discussion about this venture. Uh, like any good organization, I mean, you have a hospital organization that will be doing well, generating revenues, and you have others that are not doing well. So if you have ones that are not doing well, you take a closer look at it and then you have to present a a lot of options to either stimulate that to do well or maybe divest yourself from it. So I I think uh, it is a first step towards us at least have that again, serious conversations. What I really want, I just want to have that discussion. Uh, keep it going. It's saying we were having a discussion about the museum and any other aspect of this organization that we're not seeing a lot of revenue stream. Uh, so this is, to me, uh, a step in the right direction. So thank you, Chairman Clark, for putting this uh forward and I'm looking forward to uh support this, this one here.
Any other comments? All in favor? Carrie. Item eight, instruction reading and consideration of bylaws.
Okay, so the first uh bylaw that is identified on the agenda will not be read as the matter was deferred. Moved by Counsel La Chava, seconded by Counsel Patrick Adams, being resolved with the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed signed by the mayor clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty two eighty four being a bylaw to authorize the mayor clerk to execute an agreement with Don Hatchett Trucking Limited for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three supply and delivery of winter sand mix and stock.
All in favor of questions? All in favor? Carrie.
Moved by Counsel Rick Owens, seconded by Counsel La Chava, being resolved with the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed signed by the mayor clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty two eighty five being a bylaw to authorize the mayor clerk to execute an amended agreement with Federal Development Agency for London, Ontario, Fed North, for candidate community revitalization program funding for improvements to City Park.
All in favor?
Carrie. Moved by Counsel Patrick Adams, seconded by Counsel La Chava, being resolved with the following bylaw be read at first, second, the third time numbered, passed signed by the mayor clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty two eighty six being a bylaw to provide for advanced votes to be held prior to voting day and to provide for reduced hours of voting in institutions and retirement pools. And this is an oversight on my part and this is fine, it's because coming to solely to entities.
Any questions on this? All in favor? Carrie. Questions from council staff and noted notices of motion. Challenge, uh, item eleven, counselors reports. Counsel Owen.
I'm just acting Mayor Owens. Yeah, I uh attended the powwow on last Friday, I think it was, and uh it was very well attended. But I I had some interesting conversations with people, like minded people myself. And and a lot of those conversations had to do with um explanations of uh the regalia that the the indigenous people were wearing. Um, I mean, it's very attractive and it's very nice and and it's amazing. But when we're watching, we don't know, you know, for instance, the bell dresses or whatever, and I apologize if that's not properly. Um, what do they symbolize? Like, um, so I think it it opened some discussions where people will look further into it now. Um, for instance, headdresses, you know, some have more feathers, less feathers, some have different colors. You know, what what do they symbolize? And uh, you know, I had a number of conversations like that and so it it was extremely well organized. I would have liked to see a little bit more supervision um on the children's playground as if uh there are many teenagers occupying that. Uh, not using it appropriate, obviously, because it's meant for toddlers, uh, you know, up to about grade six. And um but you know, there were times when my grandchildren couldn't use it because it was too busy. And uh with with uh what I would call young adults. But these are minor things and uh overall, I was very impressed and glad I did.
Yeah, thank you very much. I too attended the powwow law with me a black faculty. And I'm very, very uh educational. And I'd just like to uh thank all the organizers to put in our good show. And I'm looking forward to a next one next year.
I couldn't attend this one. I had surgery the day before and was instructed, I wasn't allowed to leave the house. But I had uh students that went and they had really good things to say about it. So it was a good event.
Yeah, it's nice to see all the school kids were all there too. That was very, that's educational to me. That's the classroom set.
I also, because they are like all other council members that physically could be there. Um, the most important thing that um comes out of that day is the open dialogue. Um, and the learning, the students, all schools, uh, to my knowledge, um, that participated used it as a learning tool. So um, and that's exactly why we have days like that, uh, to open that dialogue. And it was a very um solemn day, even though sometimes it gets caught up in the ceremonies. But it is a solemn day for learning and dialogue. It was excellent.
I've got a short one. Uh, usually I would do the report after the event, but because this is our last meeting, I can't. Uh, I got an invitation or invitation was extended to mayor and myself as a Francophone counselor in a small northern Ontario mine uh mining town to go do a presentation in grade five in Madame Nantes class about the uh challenges of me, a French speaking counselor in an English, predominantly English community. So I will be doing that next week. And my last report is just as this is our last meeting. I think it's fitting, or as as this council, I think it's fitting to acknowledge that I don't think I can say it's been an entirely pleasurable experience over the last four years. It's definitely been a good learning experience. Uh, it's been an adventure working with you guys, uh, ups and downs. Take it for what it is and uh, yeah, good luck in future endeavors.
Moved by Counsel Stacy White, seconded by Counsel Patrick Adams, being resolved with the verbal updates from members of council, be received.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, so addition on question, I am twelve. So there's a motion to move into closed session.
Moved by Counsel Rick Owens, seconded by Counsel Stacy White. He resolved the council adjourned camera pursuant to section two thirty nine six B of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended at five fifty one P M for the following reason, procedural matter approval of September twenty 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 two, closed session minutes.
So, okay. Oh, on favor? Carrie? Motion arise from closed.
Moved by Counsel La Chava, seconded by Counsel Patrick Adams, being resolved in council reconvened open session at five fifty five P M.
All in favor? Carrie, matters from closed. Item fifteen, confirmation bylaw.
Moved by Counsel Stacy White, seconded by Counsel Patrick Adams, being resolved with the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed signed by the mayor clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty two eighty seven being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of council, council at its meeting held October fourth, twenty twenty.
All in favor? And a German.
Moved by Counsel Rick Owens, seconded by Counsel La Chava, being resolved at this regular meeting of council, the hour, sure. At five fifty six P M.
All in favor?